To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have something.
Okay.
This is just last minute, but I happened to be up here earlier and had the opportunity to watch the Farmington New JV football team score their touchdown and conversion to win the game. And so I, it was a last minute game. It was a short season for them because of the fact that, you know, we, we didn't have a coach for a while. And so I would like to really thank and congratulate Fred Wilmore. He stepped up when we didn't have a coach and he had certainly a lot to do with the other levels of football that he's involved with. But I think it was a good experience for the high school kids and they ended on a winning note. So it doesn't get any better than that. So thank you. Thank you, Fred.
I understand there going to be a birthday next year.
If we've been invited to join our division, there'll be a realignment and I think we're going to be division four or five. It's the lower division, but that'll be good. So.
Good. Um, moving on to minutes, entertain a motion on the minutes of October 16th.
I, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to make that on non-public session one. It shows Nicole under the excused category, but she was at the rest of the meeting. So.
Well, I had something on that one too. It said, did we meet in the afternoon and then meet in the evening? Because it says that we moved out of non-public at 3:29 PM on that theme. And I was like, did we meet in, it was two, two Mondays ago.
Um. Hmm. Of, of non-public one.
Yeah, non-public one. Yep. Mr. Shagden moved to come out of non-public session one at 3:29 PM and I, I just didn't know if that time was wrong or if I'm seriously missing that we met in that afternoon. Maybe that's why she was excused.
I think it, I think it was 8:28.
Okay.
She probably did what I always do, pull up an old one.
Yeah. Oh, gosh, yeah.
Save it new. So, so that particular one just has Nicole moved up into the present category and coming out of non-public at 8:29?
I think so. We can double check the.
Yeah. Other than that, if you would, I'd like to motion the minutes of October 16th, public session, non-public as amended, non-public two and three, as written.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, on October 23rd, public session, non-public one, two, three, and four, as read.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain. I was not present. New business. Um, we have Stratford Learning Center down, but I am under.
We're taking that off the agenda for this evening.
Okey dokey. Any other new business?
Stacy, I wondered, if I may, if you or someone looked into if a child is late and their parent doesn't call, does that, is the automated system on and working?
Cause you had that issue.
I had that issue.
You had that issue. So I don't know if we just talked about it and dropped it, or I just didn't want it to go to be missed because obviously.
You know, I don't, um, I know it's being updated in Power School, but I don't know about, I haven't had an app since since that night.
Right.
Um, I will follow up because honestly, I don't know if it went anywhere.
Okay.
Um.
You could test drive it tomorrow. Keep her home.
I'm sure she'd like, she'd like to be the guinea pig for that.
Blake asked to stay home with Joey.
Ah.
Joey said no.
Any other new business? Moving on to unfinished business, family and student handbook. Um.
So at last week's board meeting, a draft copy was presented for the board's consideration. It was asked at the conclusion that some additional review and edits be, be done. Thanks to Jessica, my eyeballs are popping out of my head. But with all due respect, she did a thorough review and I would say at this point, 95% of those edits are complete. The 5% consists of essentially finding, um, live links to the EDs. I was able to find the RSAs and the policies, but the EDs I'm still chasing down. And there's one historical question for the construction, I believe, a Valley View. I won't go into the age that was brought up as a result of the comment.
No.
I'm, I'm chasing that down too.
That was meant to be a joke, saying it can't be 20 years since I've gone to high school.
You wanna try 52?
So disregard that comment. I was trying to be funny, Jim. You just didn't pick up on it.
It, it was there, she didn't put it in the, um, right font or the joke font. Yeah. Sarcastic font.
I don't know what the board's pleasure is, but if I could suggest, um, a motion, something to the effect of, once those edits are complete, the handbook could be made available, unless you would like to do another review, which I'm certainly not opposed to.
I'd like to, because I haven't had as much time with it as, um, I would have liked, and I missed the last meeting. Could you make all the edits and then we can add it to the agenda as a final read?
Sure. Yep.
Thank you. I don't know if anybody, if everybody's also. Um. Anything else on the handbook? Or are we good? Um, well, let's see. Um. I know these were on the agenda for last week. I don't know what we did with them.
Essentially, we tabled them. Um, and we had asked Mac, I don't know if Mac, if you had an opportunity to see if they were boilerplate, sort of state boilerplate.
Policies for student activities.
Yeah, that were different from what we have.
They have that.
Okay.
And what is the one that needs, that we need for?
To.
Is it the?
Wellness?
Yes.
Wellness JD something.
Did we bless that again? Or was that also tabled? I don't know where we left that.
I think, well Cheryl and I had a question on that because we didn't know if it had to go through policy committee and then to the board or.
I think only if there was any changes, if we were recommending changes, but I think that was the boilerplate.
Yeah.
That we were just blessing. I don't know if we made any changes or discussion last week on it.
No.
I don't believe we did. Mary and I had looked at it and saw quite a few things that.
Needed to be changed or updated. Okay. Um, all right. Well, we can send that back through well, uh, through wellness, through policy committee, wellness through policy committee.
That's fine too. They take that as an answer that you're working on.
Okay. Perfect. Great.
Yeah, we used to know, um, under review, under board review and they're fine with that.
Perfect.
The only thing I would add to that was, you know, we always, we seem to get a lot of stuff from New Hampshire's school boards. And if anybody happens to notice that another district has brought it up or NHSB is, has done some work on it. It's eminent. I mean.
Right.
But, um, the other thing that I noticed on a lot of the fundraisers I've been looking at recently is that the payments go to the vendor itself. It's not like you've, the, the kids selling tickets aren't Venmoing, whatever.
Right.
You have to go to that, then that check comes to the district.
Right.
And gets disbursed. Your disc is, exactly. So kind of just keep an eye out. If you see something that they say, okay, guys, we're, we're starting to get ready for this electronic.
Right.
Money. And I don't think that's.
Yeah.
I hope I don't live long enough.
I don't, but I don't think, if I may, I don't think that there's anything active right now that's asking for a personal Venmo. Is there?
I, I didn't, I didn't see. And the reason I even brought it up was because I didn't know how that worked.
Right.
I didn't know, you know, like she, like Nicole mentioned, I mean, you go door to door knocking and, you know, sell cookies or whatever, then the money comes in that way. But I didn't know what the current process was for that to happen.
Get your Bitcoin ready.
I checked out on that. Thank you.
SAU technology.
Could you pass that? In your Google chat, there's a digital copy of the paper version that I'm presenting to the board. While the board didn't ask for this, um, I thought it might be in everyone's best interest for, um, us to take a kind of look at the SAU as it stands right now. I was hoping to give you a complete package all at once, but, um, I think in, in fairness to the effort and time, um, I'll, I'll do it in pieces. So what this is, this is an attempt at looking at where the district is in terms of, um, technology right now. There's a lot of pluses. There's some minuses, um, but I also wanted you to know where some of the components that make up our technology come from. Um, I think it might be worth a, a conversation, maybe outside of a formal meeting like this. But I would just ask that the board read it for what it's worth and I can entertain questions at a, at a later time. There's, while there's two additions, they, they're basically the same thing. I prepared a, a slide presentation, but it's, it's based on the, the Google Doc that has more detail. So essentially they say the same thing. I just presented it in a different fashion.
Does this have, cause I haven't read all the way through, um, your recommendations or what mainstay has for recommendations, I assume, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
But for the public at home, the, just so you know, the district essentially is in a good place. Technologically speaking, uh, kids having Chromebook access, you've got a, a wide variety of technological capabilities on the part of the staff. So to, in, in that regard, um, you should be very pleased with the things that have been done over the years to bring the district to the place where it finds itself right now. Uh, my purpose in all of this is just to kind of, uh, regroup around what's been done in the past in, in order to identify, um, a roadmap for the district to move forward in.
Do we still have, um, hotspot devices that we're able to lend to students that might not have internet access at home?
I can look into that. I don't have an answer to that.
Um, I know throughout COVID, we had gotten them from, um, I don't know if it was Atlantic broadband or wherever, but yeah. I know we returned some and somebody asked me about it kind of recently and I don't know the answer.
And, uh, one thing you should all be aware of as well is Mainstay, which is our, our, our outside vendor that does a lot of the IT support for us. Um, we have three individuals who I refer to as boots on the ground. And, uh, a major inventory of equipment, um, is underway and nearly complete. And we are to a point where, um, one third of, uh, the tech house, as I call it, um, is currently filled with, um, technological components that no longer serve any purpose. Um, they're either unfixable, outdated, or both. Um, and we're preparing to dispose of those with the understanding that any disposal, prior to any disposal, any device that has or component that has a hard drive or any sort of data sitting on it, all of that will be wiped clean. Before we dispose of these things.
I say we have a smash party.
Right? I know.
Hammer.
Have like a smash room.
Stress reliever.
Yep. But, and does Mainstay have a way to, um, dispose of those or is that something? Okay. Cause I know, I assume some of them just can't go into a landfill.
Right. Yes. They have a, a disposal means as well as a means of wiping devices.
Okay. Perfect. Good deal.
And eliminate anything from the cloud? Is that part of the cleanup?
It's, no, it's mostly the hardware.
Oh, okay.
We don't want any hardware leaving with, uh, any sort of information on it.
Okay, good.
Now where is the cloud, Mary Jane?
Um.
About 40,000.
Northeast.
I couldn't resist.
I can show you.
Cause I have no idea where mine is either.
Scratch that 40,000 feet comment.
No, I plonked that high and I haven't run into it. So.
Okay.
Snowplow bed. Larry.
Larry's up.
Join us.
Hi Larry.
Have fun.
Please.
Sent the thing and I made up a list. I did contact nine different companies. I believe it was, I think it was five of them that I called personally before sending something out to see if they would be interested in it. Out of those five, they all said no interest in even talking about it. We were too far away or they didn't have the equipment or they just didn't want to do it. I did send bids submittals to Steve's Lawn Care, CMJ Enterprises. Uh, did not hear back from them. When I contacted Elf's Landscaping, they did say that they would be interested in bidding. So I sent them a bid, but didn't hear back. So, the only one that returned one was Cardinal and Sutton's, who we've had for the last 20 years, I think. On his thing, I believe, I believe he kept his rates the same. Plow truck by the hour, loader by the hour. And he's on his bid, he put that he would keep that the same for the duration of the contract of three years. The sand and salt this first year, it's $71 an hour and material $77 a yard. And for the next two years of that, put that it was subject to the material increases only.
Now, did we do a three-year contract the last time we, or is this a new thing for him?
Yeah, this was, this is the first time we've done a three-year contract.
Okay. Um.
Why? So that we're not going back every year?
I don't know. That's what was on the bid submitted that I was given. I thought maybe it was approved by the board.
I guess I don't have a, if I may, I don't have a problem with it, but what I did not see anywhere was an escape clause.
Right.
So we can, as far as I'm concerned, we can conditionally approve this. I don't think we have a choice, but that's where I would go anyway.
Yep.
But I do think we need to have, maybe have Eric give us an insert for the contract. Because without that, we can't do more than one.
Right. Unless, I mean, do you want? Do you want to ask him if he only wants to do a year and just filled in year two and three because it was an open space on the form?
I can.
I don't have a problem doing year by year because at some point Sammy and the boys are gonna say, yeah, no.
Right. That.
And, and that's why I said escape clause, because if halfway through the three-year period.
Well, yeah, we've always done a one-year.
Right. That's why I, that, I'm assuming he just filled that in because.
Yeah.
It was there. Um.
When was what we sent last year?
Unless when we sent it, we did maybe like a strike through, through those boxes. Um, but, I mean, I would be fine, you know, kind of help along the lines of Mary approving the first year and then maybe following up with him and making sure.
Yeah, I could call him tomorrow and ask him.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think he'll have a problem just doing that year to year thing.
Right. Then we're not involved.
Right.
It just turns into a more of a rigmarole for everybody.
Anything can change. I mean, three years ago, people were looking for work and now they're.
Right.
Scarc.
Yep. Um. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna overstep your motion that you were going down, going down that road. So.
No, I think I would conditionally. What I don't want is for them to disappear. So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that we need to do at least a conditional approval. Larry can report back to us if he wants to do one, if he wants to do one, we're all set.
Right.
If he wants to do more than that, we just need a little paperwork magic and, and that'll be fine. And that works for both parties as well.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Larry.
Welcome. Nice job.
Any other unfinished business?
I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we need to start considering re-energizing the subcommittee work.
Mm-hmm.
You know, policy, um, as learning enhancement.
I thought we had a date. I was thinking of that today and I thought Kathleen had sent out an invite.
I, I wouldn't have seen it, but.
Right. And I couldn't find it in my quick search on my, um, calendar, but I will follow up with her.
Okay. I know it's gonna be anti-time wise, because we're about to dive into the budget pool.
Right.
But.
But no, but I mean, we'll have first quarter data shortly, so it might be a good time to kind of dig into that.
Yeah.
And kind of make a game plan for quarter two and going forward. So, and then policy committee, we've got some work to do, which is, we've been doing that, you know, online and whatnot. So we can continue with that practice. Were there any other committees that we were kind of?
Joel had talked about.
Is.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Um, just trying to, I just sent an email to ask one more staff member if they would be willing to join it.
Okay.
I wanted a guidance counselor on the committee. I thought it was important to have that. And as soon as I get an answer on that, we'll be scheduling.
Perfect.
Is that, that's an existing committee or do we have to vote to?
It's existing. They already voted.
Yeah, when we did the.
We voted shortly after the, the night of the reorg.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, that's right. Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Any other unfinished business? Financials.
Oh, boy.
Here we go.
Oh, boy.
This is the last.
See how quickly we got there?
Great job, guys. Uh, I have some good updates here, um, and a, and a bit of a list. So I'll just get started. Uh, today, uh, we met with the town. Uh, we met with Ken and their BA, uh, well, whoever their equivalent of me is.
Right.
Um, and they were very helpful, um, in offering us funding for cash flow, things like that, if we run into any issues. And any other assistance that they could provide, making sure that we get our forms done. They can set the tax rate. So doing their due diligence and doing so very well, in my opinion, to come and offer us help is really nice. Show a good faith by the town, uh, something that we'll want to repay. So I gave them a status update on our DOE 25. I do not have a final copy of that yet today. Um, but it's over 60% done and I'm measuring that by the actual amount of pages on the report. It's over 30. But the, I hit a snag this morning. That took me more time than I thought. Uh, there was some balance, there was a balance sheet issue with some accruals. Uh, it's the same issue that Pam Reynolds spotted when she was doing the work on the general fund and it was the one thing that she didn't get to. So I had to communicate with her a little bit and then I gave her a call and then she kind of consulted me through finding a mutual solution that we could have both agree on. Um, and so that's been taken care of and now I'm kind of proceeding. I haven't hit any other snags. So if all is well, I can bring it hopefully tomorrow, at least to, uh, the plan budget committee meeting that I'm going to. In terms of budget committee meeting, I've answered all their requests. I've given all the appropriate forms. So we're back up to par. Uh, the one thing that we're not quite a hundred percent there is our bank reconciliations. Not that they're not being done. It's just that the balances in the system don't actually agree yet for us to close those bank recs. And so that way the treasurer can't really do her side of things either. So that's the, the snag on that, but I'm working with Cheryl on that. We made a little progress today because the balance sheet issue that I had in 23 was also causing a rollover issue into 24. So I hit two birds with one stone today and I was able to solve the rollover problem, get our balances rolled over, uh, as well as move forward with the DOE 25. I just logged on to our grants for the first time today. Um, and we are getting a electronic payment of $889,615.42 imminently, uh, which is fantastic. Uh, that is mostly because of Esser, Esser two and Esser three, and that's only reported through June. So there's still another three months to report for both grants to get us fully caught up. Not including October, which we're right on the cusp, obviously. So there'll be an extra month to bring through, but, um, that's going well. Title one is caught up. Title two is caught up. Uh, our oldest IDA has been caught up, reported through the end of the cycle and closed as of September. Uh, and we're still proceeding with the two other IDEAs that we have open to us, which I believe one has been fully allocated into a budget and the other one we're still working with. But Colleen has done a fantastic job with that, as well as Kathleen has done a fantastic, uh, job with her title grants. So, uh, amazing staff. We're lucky to have them. Budget templates were set out to the staff. Uh, we're giving them a week, which is a condensed timeframe. Uh, but we're also meeting with them during this timeframe and helping them through the process, since many of them are new as well. Um, and to do that, we're using our historical data. Um, we're meeting, we're meeting with, uh, the staff to get an idea of what they actually need, not just want, but my goal is to create a budget that fits the needs of this district, um, at an absolute bare minimum. And I hope it spells out what it takes to financially run this district for a fiscal year. Uh, so that's the goal with that. And I hope to have a report to you guys, an initial proposal, budget proposal, uh, within the next two weeks. The plan is for next Monday. That might be a little tight, um, but we're gonna try and make it happen. I got my credentials swapped over for the tax portal, uh, with the DRA, which will physically enable us to upload the forms that we need to set the tax rate, uh, which is good, uh, because that can take a few days to happen, but I got it done. Uh, we're missing our 434 revised revenue form, uh, which needs to be updated and turned in, which is typically done after the tax rate setting process. So it's not necessarily a late form. It just hasn't been completed yet. Uh, and that goes in tandem with our DOE 25. The DOE 25, at the same time writes our MS 25, which is the DRA equivalent of the uh, end of year school district expenditures, the DOE, um, which I have to bring both of those to you. Once the DOE approves, the DOE 25, you sign off on them and then we get them uploaded. Uh, and I broke that down for Ken, who was excited to hear that. So hopefully he can sleep better at night. We had a mix-up with our NSLP. We thought we did a corrective action plan to retain our May claim, when in fact it was our fresh fruits and vegetables May claim. Uh, but they're still allowing us to do the waiver for May for the NSLP as well. So nothing changes. Uh, it's just gonna get drawn out an extra week or so while we correct that. I'll look into those hotspot devices, make sure that if we do have them, that we're paying the appropriate price for them. And if they're not being used, that we figure that out. Just that put a light bulb on my head. Um, that's really all I have. My head has been. That's really all I have. My head has been almost entirely on this report now, uh, now that I'm through the imminent danger with the grants. But our grant fund has been fully balanced as well. Uh, that means the revenues equal the expenditures, um, which means the audit can proceed as well.
Have the auditors been in again or I know they came in.
No, they're waiting for the grant info and then they said they would schedule a time to come back. So they have to come back and finish what they originally started, uh, take a look at the grants and then do a single audit. So that's, they give me a giant list and then I give it to the staff and we play, uh, hide and seek with that stuff for a day. So, uh, after that, I hope to have a quick audit delivery process and bring that information to you all directly.
Does anybody have any questions for Mac? Mary?
Have we arrived at an unexpended fund balance?
Yeah.
The, uh.
Even, uh, not to the penny, but you know, a dollar, quarter. I won't hold you to it. I know that there are still some things that.
Yeah, it's, it seems like a healthy amount right now. As I move through the DOE twenty five, it could change. Uh, if I spot another inconsistency or anything like that. But the fund balance I'm looking at, uh, it, it is substantial. Uh, I think the difference between revenues and expenditures before I made some adjustments was nine hundred thousand, which may speak to the fact that some things went unspent towards the end of the year. And that may not be a true representation of what it financially costs to get through the full year. But, uh, that is still a number that I will say is just an unaudited, unaudited number and it needs to be audited as well. So I won't sign the dotted line yet, but I mean, I think we'll be somewhere in that ballpark.
I did note that the, um, ESER two, we have until no later than November fourteenth to apply for any and all. That is the drop down date.
The final report is due by the fourteenth of November. That is correct. Thanks for keeping a tab on that, Mary, and, uh, that's still something I plan to have done in time, so.
At the budget committee meeting last Wednesday, there was some, uh, dissension about the reports that they were looking at, um, that they were not the same as what they've always gotten. So I bothered Mac for about an hour last Thursday and said, okay, we gotta, and we found them. We got them printed with totals.
Amazing.
Yes.
Do that. I believe those have already been sent on.
They have.
The only thing we're missing right now is the all revenue report and he was, he had to rebuild some of that.
Yeah, I, I just sent you an update on that before the meeting, Mary. You may not have seen it, or if you did, that's fine. But, um, just to speak to that, so the budget section of our revenue report hasn't been filled in. And I, um, have this handy dandy budget presentation here. That kind of shows the projected revenue, which I'm not an expert on this district yet, but I tend to disagree with this initial, um, revenue proposal because there are some other forms of aid on here that are missing. So I don't think the report will ever be fully accurate this year if we use these numbers. And I don't know that I can just throw in revenue now after the fact, uh, or projected revenue. So we'll probably have to go off of what actually comes in, is, is my thought, and then update what we have here. Uh, and then those revenues get revised after they set the, set the tax rate, so then it would be more, um, accurate. And we can transfer those numbers over to, to our budget as well, so make sure that we're getting the right amounts. And there, there was a couple of things to unwind, like our state revenue was getting caught up with our town revenue and some other stuff last year, so that took a while to break out. But, um, that's some things I just saw that were inconsistencies that I can't.
I gave him a little history lesson, like how many times did I go out to my car, like three?
Yeah.
I'd say, Jesus, if I, oh, it's in my car. So I'd go out and grab like a notebook or that form or minutes or something. So it was a very productive hour. I think we got, we actually did, I think we tied in a seventy five thousand dollar line that had been.
I have it right here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So Mary had pointed out that the, the DOE approved budget, the budget the voters voted on, did not match what we initially proposed as a school board entity, if you will. So I was able to find that inconsistency, so I can return the budget to what it actually should be and what was voted on.
Awesome.
Plus or minus a few cents, but. Great job, Mary, and it's great to see that school board members will literally rewrite the whole budget if they have to.
We, we may or may not have done that a handful of times around this time last year, so.
So excellent work and, uh, it, it really is a team here and I just want to speak to that, so.
The last thing I have to speak to is encumbrances. In, on June twenty ninth, the infamous June twenty ninth, we were up against the wall. Superintendent Vaughn said she had spoken with Mike Comfo, who was auditing firm. Told her that the best way to handle it would be to vote in the current encumbrances in funds ten, so that they could continue to expend it. That number was eight hundred and thirty four dollars and eight hundred and thirty four thousand, thirty six and some change. So from that, what ties into year end encumbrances is you, the unspent funds must be encumbered by illegally enforceable obligation for their expenditure. And the second part is the obligation much, must attach to the funds before the end of the school year for which they're appropriate. So we have a blank number of eight thirty four because she didn't know which of those lines. What we need to do is identify the lines that made up the eight hundred and thirty four and determine that they had a purchase order or they had a contractor, that there was something there. Let's say, so we had eight thirty four, let's say three thirty four of it was actually encumbered and that's an average. If we don't do this and vote to release those encumbrances, that's five hundred thousand, just about a dollar on the tax rate. That will not go back. So we need to deep dive into that and come up with a variance between, bless you, between the eight thirty four that we blanketed and what was actually tied to an expense. For example, we encumber the electricity line, but we don't get the bill until a little later on. That's a valid expenditure and encumbrance. But if we encumbered eight thousand dollars for pencils and we never got to using that.
And sometimes they do what they have, what they call blanket PO.
Yeah.
They create one and leave it open all year and go back to it if they need to.
But we really need to.
Process to go through that normally.
Yeah, we really need to look at that. Um, the RSA is thirty two seven. That gives you five or six points of what can legally stay in the, I have it if you want, Mac, I can just give it to you.
Perfect.
That a lot, there are half a dozen different things that are allowable to be carried over for an encumbrance, even if there isn't a thing. One of which I believe is federal grants, so, um, we do need to fine tune that number. So instead of, if there's ten cents difference between what we encumbered and what we need to release, that's a number, we have to take that vote. And I mean, it literally, without that, they're gonna pay for everything in that motion at eight hundred and thirty four, whether we use it or not. And that's, that's not, not good.
Yeah.
I can definitely look into that.
Okay, I'll toss that thirty two.
You want me to pass that one?
Oh, sure. You know, I mean, I like to dig them up and put them out, kill another tree. I do, at last week's, um, budget committee meeting, there were multiple questions or points made. And I'll address this tomorrow night, actually, that there were, there were, there's rationale behind the points that were made. Unfortunately, not having my feet on the ground that night, a message would be sent and I didn't respond to it. So I set some time aside and, and I did that. So that when we meet with the budget committee, maybe under public participation or whatever, I would be happy to say, well, when that point was made, this is the response to it and it's been corrected. One of which, for example, was what I mentioned earlier with the reports, you know, we can't find a total. We don't, we have to relearn something, this and that, whatever. So recognizing at that meeting that that was causing anxiety, we, I knew there was a way to fix it, so that's what we did. But they need to know that all the points and comments and discussions that went on, we're not ignoring it. We're, we don't know what's broken, we can't fix it.
Absolutely.
I will be more than happy with the board's permission to walk them through a few things that I have answers for.
Absolutely.
Would you like to do that?
Yep.
And the only other thing on, on, um, financials is eleven fourteen. The budget committee historically would have met the night before Thanksgiving.
Right.
And they, they don't like to do that.
No.
So they pulled it back a week to the twenty, not the twenty second. I'm sorry. They, they're gonna do it Tuesday of that week. Is that what it was? Or the week before, whatever.
I thought it was the fifteenth, I'm, I'm not sure if it's the twenty first.
Fifteenth is the Wednesday, the one before Thanksgiving.
So if that's the case, the fifteenth, then we have to have the we, they'll need to see, let's see, November, so October, the standard reports that we've now formatted to how like it. That has to be, um, turned over to the town and the chair of the one week before. So if the meeting is the fifteenth, then. So they need those reports before tomorrow night. They've already gotten Fund ten, Fund twenty two. We're looking at, um, all revenues and balance sheet. I can't find it. I know I've read that balance sheet.
I, I have sent it, um, I copied it on our email thread.
Okay.
The balance sheet.
Yeah.
Today?
Uh, it, already, but I can resend it too.
Okay.
So tomorrow night, hopefully, at least sometime during, they already got two of the reports. We can get balance sheet and all revenues onto Joe and Erica, then they'll have it. Now, they're not gonna have it a week in advance like they want, but we didn't have a month in between. We had less than a week.
I sent them, um, the Fund ten and Fund twenty two, as you just said. But then I also sent them account level balance, revenue report from thirty one, expenditure budget VA, which might mean balance or VA. And then account level oper, it might be operation.
Yeah, the operation report. It's a more detailed expense listing.
Okay.
It actually shows all revenues and all expenses for the time period in question and it, and it serves to back up that balance sheet. It's in the same format.
Okay.
So my theory at this point is the budget committee is used to getting basically four reports. So Mac and I worked so that we can go back to those. And then if, as he works with the budget committee or attends, he'll be able to hear, well, gee, I, I have a report that I think will help them come forward.
Right.
Right now, I think with budget season coming up with a little bit of anxiety going on around. Let's just stick, this is my recommendation, to stick with the four basics and then one by one, if we want to add another report or even a report, like quarterly or something like that, that they can use or not use. I, I don't want to inundate them at this point with anything more. I love seeing the reports myself, but they're basically, the budget committee is very used to being like a seven to eight fifteen meeting. So.
Right.
If that's good with everybody, I think we should.
I'm okay with that, yep.
Okay.
Did you have something?
No.
I'm done.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, you, when you did your update now, Mac, you said the NSLP, I don't know what that is.
National School Lunch Program.
Okay.
That's how we file for reimbursement through the Fed for our pre-redeemed lunches.
Thank you.
Works for me.
Um, the only thing I had, and I think when I was reviewing the minutes from last week, it was touched upon, but because I wasn't here, I'm gonna ask again.
Yeah.
Where are we? I know you said you got the grants through July, June?
June, end of year, yeah, this whole year.
Um, where does that leave us with getting new things in the portal?
You're gonna like this answer. So by the next meeting, I intend to have those reports filed and caught up and then I say we get on it.
Okay, because I just don't want to lose, the only thing I, I'm thinking of are the devices for TASPA. I just want to make sure that we get them ordered and in, and going, so.
I think we already have the narrative.
Yeah, we do. Yep.
And we'll, we'll find a way to make that happen.
Okay, perfect. That was the only thing.
Can you imagine using those last Wednesday night?
Right, I know. Yep.
I mean.
And I guess that was probably what kind of precipitated my antiness, so, um, I just don't want to, not that we're gonna forget, but it's just kind of a hot front burner item right now, I guess.
Yeah, and I try to make your priorities my priorities too and just making sure I balance that with the DOE or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
It's been on my mind and I want to get it done for you.
Excellent.
The other thing, I'm, I'm sorry, are you done?
I'm good, yeah.
There was some talk the other night about historically, budget committee sees the school board's draft budget by Thanksgiving weekend. And that gives them four or five days to look over it. Then we start scheduling meetings like, um, or we have to get it and approve it and move it forward. But then, um, the superintendent does the presentation to them, they ask any questions. I think it's, if I remember correctly, there's a presentation which is no questions.
Right.
It's explanation, that the following one is
The.
pick apart and ask and add and subtract and things like that. Those have all got to be scheduled. Normally, we do the superintendent's, uh, presentation second week in December. And those things are all coming up. Of course, that tricked off one more thing, sorry.
They might, can you find, they might already have those on their calendar.
They don't, they're waiting to hear from us.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Because we, if we're not, if we aren't gonna hit that November Thanksgiving weekend for them, that's gonna push it off a little bit more.
Okay.
The other thing in keeping in mind, and we're going into budget twenty four, twenty five.
Correct.
In September, so we start our fiscal year July one, so we've got July, August and September available for ESER grants, ESER funding. So three months of ESER, three months of everything that we put into ESER salaries and SR own things are all set. But when we budget, we're going to need, we're probably talking nigh on to a million dollars that has been subsidized by ESER three. And we're going to have to plan on
Putting that money.
salaries that were there to come back, so.
Right.
It's gonna be a very.
Different.
Yeah, careful.
There's still one point five million dollars left to allocate into budgets.
Okay.
Okay.
But I, when we do, I think, you know, what Mary was getting at, when we do the next budget, we don't want to dig ourselves a hole.
We don't want a fiscal cliff.
Correct.
Cliff.
Yeah.
We don't like that word. The other thing that's come to mind is if we know we're looking at a, a, a dollar amount, let's say it's a million. And they're just, and it has to fit, fit the ESER requirements. But I believe we can actually go back a couple of years. So if there were things that would be accepted under E three, we should be able to go back. Let's just pick something like summer school, if that wasn't taken out of that, but it qualifies. We can go back and snatch that and plug it in against the three million dollar ESER. So that that's using up that money.
Right.
But it's also freeing it up on the other side, so that we don't have, the cliff is
Right.
is gonna be neutralized.
Right, as I was saying, minimize, yeah.
Quick, go on, because I think I'm done.
I know, right?
Sorry.
I just remembered something from the budget committee meeting last week. Joe, the chair, had asked, um, for bank statements and credit card statements. for bank statements and credit card statements. And I said.
To my knowledge, we have not used a credit card and.
No.
Yeah.
I refuse until everything is done.
Yeah. So, I mean.
We're happy to furnish bank statements.
Okay, so we'll just talk, I guess we can just talk about it tomorrow and see if there was something specific. Okay.
Yeah.
And, you know, in, in Joe's defense, they, he's a county commissioner and the county had some problems with somebody using a credit card.
I believe so. I believe I heard something about that.
County Commissioner?
Well.
Joe. Or he's on the, yeah, he's something on the county.
He's probably on the delegation.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, there you go.
I was going to say, I haven't seen him on the ballot for county commissioner.
Okay, okay, well, I mix my, mix my tense here, but yeah, he, they had someone in their department that kind of borrowed 19,000 dollars and used a credit card to do it.
When you gotta stay in a hotel, you gotta stay in a hotel.
Make sure you put it on something that you can.
It wasn't a Motel 6, I don't think.
So I'm sure he's a little sensitive to making sure that that doesn't happen on anything else that he might have his attachment to.
Now, I believe I've seen statements for BMO. BMO, does that ring a bell to anyone?
I don't even know what it is.
No.
If, if I'm correct, and I don't know for sure, I suspect that we have a P-card program in place, which is much more secure than a credit card.
Okay.
And if not, that is what I recommend, that we, that we swap anything to do with credit cards to P-cards. And what P-card, P-cards are, short for purchasing card. It acts like a credit card. However, you cannot carry the balance month to month. You have to pay it off. So it does create some accounting strain with that. However, you get 1% back on all your purchases. It's a very school-friendly program. And then they even block things based upon transmitter IDs from companies, vendors, sellers. And you can outlaw anything to do with purchasing tickets, hotels, et cetera, so.
But there, I mean, sometimes if we send somebody to a seminar or workshop, they may need a hotel. But anyway, I say.
Sure, yeah, they give you, they give you the tool to at least do it if you'd like.
Yeah, BOM is.
And that's through like the ASBO organizations, like country linked.
Bank of Montreal?
Yeah, BMO.
Patty would know what, what we have for that. If we don't know what to go about doing, I'm 100%.
We don't.
No.
Okay.
I've seen a statement. I think we may have something with, with BMO, but.
Well, maybe we have a membership or.
Could have a line of credit already, but I don't know if they ever did anything with it or, you know. And if not, I can find out. So I'll put it on my list.
Good things.
For the board's awareness and for planning purposes, the week of December 10th, I will not be here.
Are you taking us on vacation?
I wish.
Really? Do you wish to take us on vacation?
Hey Jim, can you do that? Hey Jim, can you do that?
This was a, I have an 84-year-old mother-in-law who lives with us and we're trying to fulfill a promise. And this was planned before I took this position. And I'm happy to work around it, any presentation schedules
Okay.
and what have you to get the Budget Committee the information they need.
All righty. Anything else before we're back to public participation? We have the rec doing their Halloween parade tomorrow, that I think starts at 4:00.
Promptly, they're leaving promptly at 4:00.
Have your kiddies dressed and ready. And yes, not a drop-off event. And then town trick or treat tomorrow night from 5 to 7.
5 to 7.
Can you tell? I do not have small children anymore. So hopefully, everybody enjoys their Halloween. And our next meeting is November 6th.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just an FYI, we had a student presentation a few weeks back regarding planning for life after high school.
Yeah.
So I wanted the board to know and the community to know that I put together a presentation called Post-Farmington High School 101. And it speaks to the options that are available, college, getting into the workforce and what have you. I met with one advisory group on Friday. I'm going to make a Google Classroom available to all the students so that they can access the materials. And I'll be doing some more of this in concert with the high school guidance department.
Awesome. Is there, I don't know what, this just triggered this question, so sorry, ahead of time. Do we have a way for parents to have access to students' Google Classrooms? Not to, I guess, comment or any, or participate in any way, but just to view it. I don't know if, I'm not super Google Suite friendly, so I don't know if that is even an option. But, or by your look, you probably don't know either. But just.
I'd be curious as to why?
Well, just to see what, if, I mean, yes, teachers should, parents have Power School access. So they can see assignments, grades, that sort of thing. But I don't think that Google Classroom and Power School talk.
They don't.
So if assignments are loaded into, I'm just using this as a, whatever just spawned this in my head. So we're just going to talk through it for a minute. If a teacher inputs assignments or whatnot on the Google Classroom, but doesn't immediately update Power School, they wouldn't see it, I guess. So if there's a la, I don't know, Mr. Henry.
Google Classroom is a, by invitation only. And the invitation is through the user's email. So if parents wanted to see, they probably would have to have an understanding with their child so that they could access it that way.
Okay.
That's my limited understanding of that.
Do you have?
There is an option.
Some words of wisdom?
Yeah, well, I don't know about wisdom, but I had a little bit more. There is an option to invite guardians in Google Classroom.
Okay.
What I don't know is what that parent view looks like. I've not had any parents that have participated.
I have honestly, as a parent, never thought of it until
Yeah.
three minutes ago, so.
I do know that there, there is an option to invite guardians. Some auto populate. So I don't know if another teacher for that student has invited that.
Right.
It populates for me. Some of them names show up, some don't. We can try it if you want and see what it looks like.
I can be anything.
Person in my classroom.
Yeah, I don't know. I just kind of thought of it. I don't know. I just probably just opened a can of worms, so I apologize to everybody now. Okay. Yeah. Right. I mean, I don't know if there's a need. Like I said, I mean, I've never felt the need, but I guess maybe not everybody's situation is the same, so I don't.
So I just did a quick search and according to Google Support, at support.google.com, guardians can't directly access for student privacy reasons. However, they can receive email summaries about the student's activity
Okay.
in those.
Oh, I do get those actually, so I must have had this thought at some point in time. Okay. All right, thank you.
Like, did Johnny really go to school?
Right, yeah. Keeping tabs.
As we, as we go into non-public here momentarily, do we have a legal tonight? I saw it's on there. I know we've typically kept it on.
We've just, yeah, been keeping it.
Okay. Do we have personnel?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, can we go into nominations and resignations first?
Yep.
And the reason I ask is then we'll do personnel and then I would like to add a personnel
Okay.
at the end, so, but I just wanted to make sure we didn't have legal.
Nope, we're good.
Okay.
So. Yeah, we. Sorry for my waylay there.
Yes, sir.
So our next meeting, November 6th, we have some manifests and I will make a motion to go into non-public session one, which we are doing as nominations and resignations under RSA 91832ABC.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Happy Halloween.